We are calling the meeting to order. Attendants?
Trustee Gaines.
Present.
Trustee Reeves.
Here.
Trustee Buffalo. Trustee Adams.
Here.
Trustee Harvey.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Public comments for closed session? Are there any?
We have none, so we're going to adjourn to closed session. But in compliance with Government Code 54-953 subsection C. 3 comma, which states prior to taking final action, the legislative body is required by law to orally report a summary of a recommendation for a final action on the salaries, salary schedules, or compensation paid in the form of French benefits of local agency executives during the open meeting in which the final action is to be taken. As the Antelope Valley Community College District local agency executives are those administrative positions entitled Assistant Superintendent/Vice President and above. Item 4.3 on the closed session agenda includes the appointment of the Assistant Superintendent, Vice President, Equity and Student Achievement. During closed session, the board will consider the employment of Dr. Rebecca Farley for the position with a proposed compensation as salary schedule A.D., column one, step two, with a doctoral stipend. If approved, she will receive the standard board-approved benefits afforded to all administrators. We are now adjourned to closed session.
This meeting to order? We're reconvening, I am so sorry, to public session attendance.
Student trustee Rivera?
Present.
Trustee Gaines?
Present.
Trustee Reeves?
Here.
Trustee Buffalo? Trustee Adams? Trustee Harvey?
Here.
We have a form.
Trustee Adams, could you read us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you. Will you all please rise, face the flag, place your hand over your heart and recite with me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you. Now we have the approval of the meeting agenda. May I get a motion?
Certainly. Second?
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approved.
Trustee Gaines?
Approved.
Trustee Reeves?
Yes.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Right.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Our report of closed session, there are no reports. For 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, a motion was made by Barbara Gaines, second by Michael Adams. With a five zero vote, the board approved the employment contract. For Dr. Rebecca Farley as Assistant Superintendent Vice President, Equity and Student Achievement, from nine one twenty twenty four through six thirty twenty twenty seven. The salary for Dr. Farley was approved as the Salary Schedule AD, Column One, Step Two, with a doctoral stipend for a total annual salary of one ninety eight two oh two point zero nine. Dr. Farley, could you please stand? We would love to welcome you warmly. Thank you so much. We are now to public comments in pursuant to Board Policy Number twenty three fifty. We are now to public comments. In pursuant to Board Policy Number 2350, public comment may be limited to three minutes per person. All speakers who would like to comment regarding the matter on the agenda must submit a public comment card to the Board President or the Recording Secretary before the point in the meeting at which the agenda item is called. Public comment cards are available at the information table in the middle of the theater from the Recording Secretary or online. 10.1, we have done 10.2. Okay, so David Adams?
Good evening, President Zallett and members of the Board of Trustees. As some of you may know, my name is David Adams. I'm a professor of business here at ABC. This fall, I will be starting, believe it or not, my 10th year as a full-time professor and my 14th year overall teaching at this great institution. I love this school. I care immensely for the students that we serve, the employees who make this institution run, and the community that I've been now that I've now called home for over 20 years. This college truly is my passion. The fall semester starts next week, and even though I've taught a full load in the summer, nothing gets me more excited and fired up than embarking on a new academic year. I'm here tonight to address an issue that has been tugging at my heart for a few years now, actually. It's the alarming number of students in my online classes that either don't know
Practice to publish our cases, often that would lead to a breach of confidentiality. So the short answer is no, there's not a website where you can go to see who's handling what case.
But we can't publish the amount of money we're spending on lawyers.
That is available already through board documents and through the contracts that the board approves and through the budget and transaction reports that are approved every month.
Is there a summary of it? Summary?
It's in all of those reports.
What did you give me a summary?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Approve.
Trustee Buffalo?
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Twelve to approval of agreement with Atkinson, Ambleson, Lawyer, Brugge, and Romo, A A L R R for legal representation services from 2024 through 2026. May I have a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Approve.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Twelve three, approval of services agreement between H W W Inc., D V A Ad Club Advertising and the Emlo Valley Community College District from August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-seven for advertising of job announcements. May I have a motion?
So move.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam President.
Yes.
Wondering, how long this is going to be? This is going to be for two years only?
In the description it states it's through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, sir.
Thank you.
The vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Approve.
Trustee Buffalo?
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Twelve four, approval of a six-year contract extension that would be twenty twenty-four through twenty thirty with Neo Gov, an online human resources recruitment system. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Approve.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Twelve five, approval to gratify the services agreement between Community College Services LLC and Emlo Valley Community College for providing appropriately qualified candidates for interim director financial aid position. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Approve.
Trustee Buffalo?
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Twelve six is approval amendment number one to the educational master plan services agreement between Cambridge West Partnership LLC and Emlo Valley Community College. May I get a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Approve.
Trustee Buffalo?
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Twelve seven, twelve point seven, approval of agreement with California Community Colleges Board of Governors for the mathematics, engineering, science, and achievement Mesa program at Emlo Valley College to assist in preparing diverse pool of candidates for transfer to four-year institutions. May I get a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? I have a question, what does this mean, assist in a diverse pool of candidates for transfer to four-year institution? Dr. Zell.
The Mesa program is designed to recruit and support a diverse group of students, looking particularly at underrepresented students in the STEM fields in math, science, and engineering. And this is a specific program designed to help them succeed, provide support, and training that they need to succeed in those courses.
Excellent. Okay. We'll do the vote.
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Approve.
Trustee Buffalo?
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Twelve eight, approval of lecturer agreement for services between Key Speakers Bureau Inc. on behalf of Jose Hernandez and Emlo Valley Community College for Equity Speakers Series.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam President.
Yes, sir.
How much is this going to cost? And who is Jose Hernandez?
The contract is for twenty-five thousand dollars, and Jose Hernandez is a Hispanic astronaut, and so we have been trying to really diversify our speaker series, particularly when it comes to the STEM fields. And this speaker came to us recommended, and so we pursued the contract with him.
Are we using student equity fund?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Approve.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Twelve nine, addendum to the master articulation agreement by and between Ohio University and Emlo Valley College for registered nursing students. May I get a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Approve.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Twelve ten, approval of memorandum of understanding between Food Forward, Emlo Valley Partners for Health, A V P H, and Emlo Valley College to provide fresh produce to those in need. May I get a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Approve.
Trustee Buffalo?
Trustee Adams? Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Twelve eleven, approval of agreement amendment number one between Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority, L A C M T A, and Emlo Valley College to provide bus services to students through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. May I have a motion?
Second.
Vote?
Our discussion, I'm sorry.
Madam President?
Yes.
We have a contract with A V P H to provide bus services, is that correct?
Do we currently have one, is what you're asking, Ms. Reeves?
Well, we have a contract with A V P H.
Is this an extension order?
This is, this is building on a previous contract, but this also extends throughout the county. This is a countywide transportation system, and we do have students who come from down below on the bus, the transportation system, and this extends, it freezes the price as is and extends it into the next year.
So can students get a free bus pass by A V P H?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Approve.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Twelve twelve is approval of amendment number three of professional services agreement between Robert Hayes, D D S, Valley Wine Dental Corporation, Inc. and Emlo Valley Community College District. May I get a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Approve.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Twelve thirteen, approval of amendment number four to professional service agreement between Summit Urgent Care and Emlo Valley Community College for in-person medical care to students. May I please receive a motion?
Second.
Discussion?
Are we increasing the amount, Madam President, if we're going to pay Dr. Hayes? Is that what we're doing here?
This is a new, a new contract to extend into the next year so that we can continue to provide the in-person medical services in addition to the timely care, which they could do on the app on their phone.
The vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Approve.
Trustee Buffalo?
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Twelve fourteen, approval to utilize the California Department of General Services Software Licensing Program, S L P, agreement with Onpar Advisors LLC for data security software purchases. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second. Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Approve.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Twelve fifteen, approval to extend the use of the Foundation for California Community Colleges Master Agreement with Amazon dot com Services LLC for district online marketplace purchases. May I have a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Approve.
Trustee Buffalo?
Trustee Adams? Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Twelve sixteen, approval to utilize the Foundation for California Community Colleges Master Agreement with Invok Learning for the purchase of education-focused artificial intelligence products. May I receive a motion?
So move.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Approve.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Twelve seventeen, approval of professional services agreement with Strata Information Group for banner support services. May I receive a motion?
So move.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Approve.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Twelve eighteen, approval of master bill contract for services between Sunrise Electric, Inc. and Emlo Valley College to provide repairs and maintenance of the Nepco brand scoreboards at the football, baseball, softball stadiums until the gymnasium. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second. Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Approve.
Trustee Buffalo?
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Twelve nineteen, approval of final notice of completion and resolution of acceptance on the Performing Arts Theater Refresh Project with Herb Funs. May I have a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Approve.
Trustee Buffalo?
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Trustees twelve twenty, twelve twenty-one, and twelve twenty-two are all with scheduled maintenance funds. I would like to group these together. May I have a motion?
So move.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Approve.
Trustee Buffalo?
Trustee Adams? Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Trustees twenty, twelve point twenty-three, twelve point twenty-four, twelve point twenty-five, and twenty-six are all with measure A V funds. I would like to group these together. May I have a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Approve.
Trustee Buffalo?
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thirteen is our informational items. I encourage you to read those. Fourteen is reports and announcement. We're going to start with Academic Senate Hal Huntsman.
Good evening, trustees, President Zelllet, and Ms. McClure. As you are probably aware, we're busy preparing for our new semester in the fall, very excited for that. One of the great highlights of the year for me, especially at this time of year, is that we are in the process of orienting our fifteen new full-time faculty members. We had our first day today of the new faculty orientation. President Zelllet was there this morning, and, you know, it's a great group of folks, and it's always great to welcome new faculty and see the excitement and really, you know, help them become part of the family. So that's been a great thing. Related to that, I want to make sure you're aware that this Thursday at noon, we have a Faculty Recognition Day, our annual Faculty Recognition Day event. Usually, it's been in the past in the spring, but we have moved it to the day before, you know, Welcome Back Day, in an attempt to hopefully get more folks to attend. And if you're able to join us, it's from noon to three in the Fine Arts Squad, and it'd be great to have you there. This month, I'd like to highlight the work of one of my colleagues and one of my actual department, the math department, Ms. Jane Bowers. Ms. Bowers has actually an engineering degree from her home country in Ukraine, but works here very tirelessly. She not only teaches her math department duties, but also has worked in the Learning Center, is very active on committees. She's just recently, she's the new incoming chair for the Distance Education and Technology Committee, and she administers and runs the Teacher Preparation Grant, which really is a great program here at the college and in the Emlo Valley that both promotes students getting into the teaching field, and so tries to provide opportunities and education for them, but also provides workshops and in-service training for high school teachers in the valley. She has been doing this for the last three years at least, and, you know, she's just tireless. And sometimes I speak to her and say, you know, Jane, maybe you should say no once in a while, but she just keeps on plugging, and she's really an exemplary faculty member, and just wanted to highlight her work. Thank you, trustees, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Emlo Valley College Federation of Teachers, Dr. Jason Bowen.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, President Zelllet, Ms. Patty McClure. I am running on four hours of sleep, so I'm somewhat delirious. I blame it on the students, actually. I went to bed last night after about four A M. I got home at about three A M., and that's because I arrived back in the parking lot at A B C at about two thirty, two forty-five, with ten Mesa students, five Pointe students, Ms. Jamie Jones, our driver, Mr. Mark Ebersbacher, and we returned from a tour of Mount Wilson. And this was probably the greatest field trip I've ever been on. I, the quality of the presentations, our docent, which I learned today is a fancy word for knowledgeable guide, was Tim Thompson. He's the president of the board at Mount Wilson or the director, and he had a wealth of knowledge to share. I learned from him that Cecilia Payne, she actually was the one who determined that stars are comprised of hydrogen and helium, and she achieved that in nineteen twenty-five. He would talk, the students would ask questions, they were engaged from noon, so I mean, well, so we left at noon, we got there about one, one-thirty, they were engaged from one-thirty to about one A M. when we left. We had the tours of the five, of four of the five telescopes, so there's the sixty-inch telescope, which we actually got to view, so look through. So we looked through that telescope from about six in the evening to one in A M. in the morning. We looked at the Andromeda Galaxy. We, we looked at the moon in so much detail that it's not even possible for many professional astronomers to get that kind of view. So now, what, we're in this, this dome, and we have it all to ourselves, which I couldn't believe. They're rotating the dome, and I was worried because I thought there had to be some kind of, you know, permission from some higher authority to do that every time, and then you have this telescope that, you know, is like half the size of this room moving around in this dome. We're eating chips, we're having a good time, they're asking questions, you know, one of the students asked, why does iron have so many of these absorption lines, but hydrogen and helium has so few? So, you know, what we had present there were the following: students, classified staff, C M S, and faculty present. What I saw was, one, our most important duty here at A B C is to serve these students because their lives were changed yesterday. But you have faculty, staff, employees of a college who carry out these duties and actually are the ones who are responsible for educating the students and inspiring them. And what I hope, going forward, this next academic year, is that we have better treatment of the employees. And I'd like to start with one of our employees who's still on administrative leave, and I'd like that, to see that this employee is reinstated. With that, I want to say congratulations to our new V P. of Equity, Dr. Farley. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bowen. We now have Emlo Valley College Federation of Classified Employees, Ms. Pam McFord.
I wanted to share that classified are busily preparing for the fall semester and excitedly serving our students. And we had, a couple of weeks ago, a huge registration opportunity, and all classified were all hands on deck. I'd also like to share that we just completed elections, and our officers are as follows: Suzanne Olson is First Vice President, Juan Eason, Second Vice President, Treasurer, Janelle Paul, Charmaine Wiley is Public Relations, and I will be serving again as president. With a new term calls for new opportunities, we are looking forward to some new changes, more involvement of our unit members, and greater opportunities for service, both for our students and for the campus as a whole. We'd like to see more involvement with classified employees. And also, I'd like to welcome the new V P. of Equity.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ford. Now we have fourteen four confidential management supervisory administrator employees, Ms. Ashley Hawkins.
As we prepare for the fall semester, I'm pleased to provide a brief update on the work that the C M S A group has been working on. We first want to congratulate Dr. Rebecca Farley and welcome her to be a part of the team. We have all been actively preparing for the start of the semester, ensuring that all necessary systems and processes are in place. We're focused on creating a smooth transition for both students and faculty as they return to campus. We do want to give a reminder that the Benefits Fair is going to be this Thursday, August fifteenth, from two to, twelve, I'm sorry, twelve to four in the cafeteria, and we are continuing to partner campus-wide to create opportunities for professional development, specifically to the management team to support their leadership roles and provide training so that we can effectively lead the campus, and opportunities for confidential folks to continue to grow as well. We are committed to fostering an environment of continuous learning and improvement. We remain committed to supporting the college's objectives and ensuring a successful start to the academic year. We're excited for fall to start, and thank you, as always, for your continued support.
Thank you so much. Associated Student Organization, Renee Lynn Wilson.
Good evening, board, President Zelllet, and Ms. McClure. So my report is, we ordered the wireballs for a hydration promotion event, and when they arrive the following week, we will have set days to pass them out, following, with our following members. And during the event, we would also promote voter registration, and that is also going to be another focus in the upcoming semester, to get as many students as possible very informed and registered to vote. Our Club Rush Committee and planning is also going very well and going very smooth. We're very happy to be very well under budget, and the inter-club council has started to meet, and we have a lot of clubs that are already reaching out, very interested in being activated and already having a presence on campus. We already do have one club activated, it is our STEM club. And also, A S O has recently met with A B C.'s administration, who they would mirror in the college. They all, we all had a lunch, it was very successful and wonderful. The food was very great, President Zelllet was there, also Ms. McClure. It was very, it was very wonderful, and a lot of students even shared plans and ideas they had for the upcoming year and even the semester, and it was a great connection to be made with also some people that are, that could seem pretty out of touch. And A S O, just in general, so far since school is starting next week, we're all just very focused on getting a good head start for this semester and to be prepared to help the students in the best ways we can. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move to the office of the Superintendent President, Dr. Zelllet.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Student Trustee. Today marks the beginning of Welcome Back Week for Fall 2024, and we are so excited for what this year brings before us. Our new faculty orientation began today, as referenced by Hal. It was a wonderful gathering, fifteen new faculty. It was so exciting to be in on their interviews and then to meet them again this morning and see all of the excitement that's coming into the classroom. Amazing group of faculty, well-credentialed, well-experienced, and ready to serve students alongside with our wonderful existing faculty who are here. We're in the process of celebrating some retirements, expressing gratitude for years of service, while welcoming new classified professionals, deans, and a new vice president. This is a time of renewal and recommitment. This is a time of renewal and recommitment. I want to give some special thanks to Daniel Connor and I T S, Dean Ladonna Tremble, and the deans who've been keeping an eye on enrollments, helping us to identify the fraudulent enrollments that are taking up space that our real students need in the classroom. Ms. Ford referenced the registration, the Reg Fest event that we had a couple of weeks ago. Prior to that, we dropped 1,300 fraudulent enrollments that were taking up spaces that actual students could have taken and did take, because now we've got a good system in place, our protocols are pretty thick, and we're working on bringing in extra help, some of which was approved tonight by the board. So this is something that requires not only diligence on the part of our I T, but also the cooperation of our classroom faculty who have eyes on each enrollment list, and also the deans who are working in the divisions. And collaboratively, we're making sure that the institution has as much space as possible for actual students. So this is something that not only Antelope Valley College is facing, but every college in the system. But despite all of these challenges, the latest dashboard snapshot tells us that our unduplicated headcount this fall is up 28.6%, and that's with continual purging of fraudulent. We're still trying to make sure we get the fraudulent enrollments out, but we're up significantly. We're, our number of sections offered for students is up 6.5%. Our enrollments are up 30.8%, and our F T Es are up 27.7%. So Antelope Valley College is well on its way to recovering from the effects of the pandemic. And I want to thank everyone who is working toward growing opportunities for our students in our community. I want to refer the board to the schedule for this week and remind you that you are welcome to attend, and all of our college constituents as well. Please refer to the schedule, attend everything that you can. This week is meant to provide the professional development and community building that we all desire, to help us bring joy to our work and bring that collaboration and collegiality that makes coming to work a successful venture. I want to invite, invite the board to the Fall 2024 Opening Day here in the Performing Arts Theater this Friday morning. We will meet for some light breakfast and social time at 8:00 a.m., and the program will begin at 9:00. We're very excited to welcome Justin Schaefer, also known as Mr. Fascinate. He is one of Forbes 30 Under 30 and is, he emphasizes STEM. He talks a lot about AI and pedagogy, and so looking forward to what Mr. Schaefer has to share. I'd like to close with thanking everyone who worked so diligently this summer, doing things like moving historic aircraft, serving on selection committees, interviewing candidates, reading applications, teaching, enrolling, serving, planning. This is all critical and important work, and your investments in this institution have paid off. It's a pleasure to welcome Dr. Rebecca Farley to ABC as our first Assistant Superintendent, Vice President of Equity and Student Achievement. Dr. Farley's demonstrated accomplishments in increasing success and persistent rates, relying on data to inform strategies, her commitment to community college students, and her passion for equity-focused, student-centric work makes her an incredible asset to our team. Welcome, Dr. Farley, and welcome to all who have joined us this summer. Our work sometimes has changeable focal points, but the guiding principle always remains the same: serve students and be kind. Welcome to Fall 2024.
Thank you so much, Dr. Zalat. We are now going to our board member comments, and we're going to start at the end with our student trustee, Anthony.
Good evening, everyone, and it is the eve of fall semester, right? I'm very excited for this upcoming semester, but what I'm really excited about is, I don't know if you guys seen the ABC Instagram, but we have a new robot named Astro. Is it like a robot dog? Is it a dog? It's a dog. We have a robot dog now. Really excited to see Astro around campus. He can do tricks, and he really wants to see you guys around campus, so make sure to take walks even in the heat, because it's worth it. Second of all, I wanted to address what Professor Adams said. Being part of the high school district, I know that this is a very important issue, and we are, we have taken steps to address this. We have the non-credit classes that work on building a foundation for English and math, and we should take, I agree that we should take a closer look at it, as well with the online portion of it. And then lastly, this past August 1st through August 3rd, I had the amazing opportunity to go to a student trustee conference up in San Francisco. It was an amazing opportunity. I learned a lot. I learned just how much in debt we are, and I'm really excited to take what I learned back here and really apply it. So looking forward to this new year. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Trustee Gaines.
It's kind of hard to follow. I want to sort of, I know Dr. Adams is no longer in the room, but I kind of wanted to just say to him that I do understand what he was talking about with regard to online classes. I think that for many people, it works, and for many, it does not work. We saw 2020 and 2021 when we were, most schools were relying primarily on online classes that our students did not do well during that time. And I think the big issue is not that, not necessarily that our young people come to Antelope Valley Community College so far behind. I think we have a tendency to always blame the previous grade levels, but I think the problem is there is the inability to build the relationship with the faculty when you are in an online class at the extent of what you could build that relationship and be able to have that, that relationship to be able to ask questions and get guidance and as you would in a regular class. I personally can't stand online classes, would never enroll in one, but I know that they are the, I'm old and they are the latest thing. So I just wanted to say that to Dr. Adams. I would be curious to see exactly what percent of our classes at Antelope Valley Community College are online versus in-person classes. So perhaps down the road. I want to say to Dr. Farley, had the pleasure of interviewing her, and welcome, welcome, welcome to Antelope Valley Community College, Dr. Farley. I'm so interested in seeing what you do for student achievement your first year and, and of course, working on our equity issues. We always can do better with regard to equity, so, so, so glad that you're going to be part of our, our team here at Antelope Valley College. And for everybody, starting in a new, a new school year, just, I think Antelope Valley College is the greatest gift of the Antelope Valley, I truly do. And each and every one of the faculty and the staff who work here make Antelope Valley College truly what it is. And our young people, I think, are a little nervous and giddy to, to show up on that first day, and I just say, say, let's all make it a memorable one for them, because think about your first day in college, you were probably a nervous wreck, and so let's try to make it as peaceful and as pleasurable and rewarding for them as we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Gaines. Trustee Reeves?
First of all, I want to welcome Vice President Farley. Trustee Gaines and I interviewed the four candidates. They were all exceptional people, and I recommend that the college consider them in other capacities here, because I think they could benefit this college if they're willing to accept other positions. Welcome to the new school year, and have a good weekend.
Trustee Buffalo?
Welcome, Dr. Farley. Looking forward to seeing your reports and the changes you will implement. Michael had mentioned Jose Hernandez earlier. I don't think he knows who he is, but anybody who wants to know, this is a phenomenal individual, phenomenal story, can watch the movie A Million Miles Away. Highly recommend it. Amazing individual. And it'll be great for this because he has such an aerospace background. This community will absolutely love it. That's it.
Trustee Adams?
It was my pleasure to represent the board at the vocational nurses' pinning a week ago. Had sixteen graduates of the program, and I didn't want to put a lot of pressure on them, but I did mention that last year, 100% of the class did pass the state exam. So they have a high bar to reach. However, it was noted that twelve of the sixteen graduates had a 4.0 GPA in the nursing curriculum, so I don't think we're going to have a problem with maintaining the 100% state exam pass rate, which statewide is about 85%. Welcome, Dr. Farley. Looking forward to working with you. And congratulations, Mr. Reeves, on your reelection to the Board of Trustees. The filing period ended last Friday, and Mr. Reeves is running unopposed, which is always the best kind of election.
Thank you so much, Mr. Adams. The date of our next meeting is September 9th, 2024. By then, we do hope to have our monitors, our audio, and our interpreters up and going. So thank you so much for your time, and we will see you next month. Meeting adjourned.